Good evening, everybody. Meeting of the Mayor and Council for Monday, April 19th, 2021, and welcome back to City Hall, finally. We've been meeting over in the large gym for the better part, over a year, I guess, so it's nice to be back despite these partitions we've got. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Cheryl Osmond with Life Church of Smyrna, Assembly of God, and invite you up now to do the invocation and pledge the flag. Everybody, please, please rise.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Heavenly Father, we want to pause and just take just a moment to thank you for this day. We recognize and respect the fact that some didn't get this day, but it's been given as a gift to us, and we want to make the most that we possibly can. So tonight, Lord, as our mayor and council convene together to do the business of this great city, I would pray, and we would pray, that you would lead, guide, and direct every decision that's made, so that it would be ultimately for the betterment of this community, but also for the glory of your great name. Father, thank you for the city of Smyrna, that's a great place to live, work, play, worship, and be a part of this great community. We ask your blessings upon all that's said and done, and may it once again be for our betterment we ask. And Father, in this great land in which we live, some have the opportunity to present their prayer in another name, but tonight, it's my honor to present my prayer in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. And amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us tonight. Appreciate it. Item two is agenda changes. We have one, 2021-167 to add item 2021-166 to agenda under consent as item E. Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All in favor, please vote. Mr. Gould is now with us, and we have approved that 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Gould. All right, number three is the mayoral report. I got a couple of things, and then we have several recognitions and proclamations. First, I want to congratulate the Campbell High School baseball team. I don't know if any of y'all were out there on Friday, but they clinched their region title. And from what I was talking to Coach Thursy, he doesn't remember. If they did this before, it predates him, so this may be their first region title in the, in, in the history of Campbell High School. So it was, it was awesome. They were down and came back in the last couple of innings and stormed the field, and they're going to be hosting the state tournament as top seed next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I believe, at Latanzi Field. So if you get a chance, come out and support the team. They're doing great. The other thing I wanted to announce, and I'm excited to, is beginning May 11th, our Food Truck Tuesdays will be back down at Bronner, and I think we're going to begin having some down by the river as well at Riverview Landing. So looking forward to that. And our first concert series concert is slated for June 12th. So we won't have the Spring Jonquel Festival, that'll be moved to October. Along with the birthday celebration will be moved from August to October, and I've gotten a lot of good feedback from that because it won't be so hot. But we're starting to do events again, and things are starting to get a little bit back to normal. I wanted to mention the vaccine effort that we have here in the city. Couple of weeks ago, we got 200 doses. The state is being, they're, they're giving doses to folks who, who prove, then prove that they can get them in people's arms, and then they give them more. And that's kind of what we did. Well, we got the first 200 doses, 26 appointment, or 26 minutes was all of those appointments. And then we got 100, we got 1,000 more, and we got those in arms last Thursday and Friday. And then we just got 1,100 more. So we're going to start doing them every Friday from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Smyrna Community Center Big Gym. So anybody can come. Appointments are online at vaccines.smyrnaga.gov. So any, any Friday, 1:00 to 4:00, and then we're going to start bringing them into the community. Tomorrow, we're at Rose Garden from 2:00 to 4:00. We're going to start bringing them to Ward 5 and Ward 7 and other parts of the city. We're trying to make it as easy for anybody that wants to get a vaccine, it's the Pfizer vaccine, anybody that wants to get it, we want Smyrna residents and others around town to have the opportunity to do that as easy as they can. That's all I've got, and with that, I'll move to item 3A, which is the appointment of interim Environmental Services Director Julie Barwig to the permanent position of Environmental Services and Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Director. We're very excited about this. Been a long time coming, and I know Julie is here. I'll turn it over to our city administrator, Joe Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Barwig, like the mayor pointed out, is our interim director of Environmental Services, and executive director of the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board. After serving as the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Coordinator since July of 2018, in her role, she provides leadership in strategic visioning, communications, fundraising, program management, environmental education, community outreach, and volunteer engagement. Prior to her work with the city, Julie managed both large and small-scale volunteer programs at Atlanta-based nonprofits, including Open Hand Atlanta and the Latin American Association. As a seasoned volunteer management professional, Julie works to help other volunteer administrators create stronger, more robust volunteer programs through serving as a secretary and public relations chair for the Council of Volunteer Administrators of Metro Atlanta. Julie received her Bachelor's of Art from the University of Georgia in international affairs and anthropology. I can say this, that Julie was named the interim director at the departure of our last director, and she has done a fabulous job. The Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board is very engaged with Julie and very supportive of this appointment. And with that, Mayor, I'll bring Ms. Barwig forward as the permanent director.
Very good. Come on up. Before you speak, let's have a vote. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Gould, seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. Good luck, Julie. You're approved 7-0. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm really excited for the opportunity to be the new Environmental Services and Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Director. I'm really excited to kind of continue to move the department and the nonprofit forward and continue to do great things for the city.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Keeps Smyrna Beautiful and our Environmental Services Department do a great job in a lot of ways in the city. If you haven't been involved, I hope, encourage you to get involved with what they're doing over there. Item B, 2021-155, appointment and swearing in of Keith Zagantz. I'm going to get used, I'm going to figure out how to say that right yet, as the city of Smyrna Chief of Police, as a result of Chief Joseph Bennett's appointment to the position of Smyrna's city administrator. I know that Keith is here with his family, and we are so excited to have you as our new chief. I will tell you that Mayor Rusty Paul in Sandy Springs is not as excited as we are, but I remind him that he stole him from us first. He was with us for 12 years, and then went to Sandy Springs, and now we're happy that he's coming home to run the police department. And I'll turn it over to Joe Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get into reading Keith's bio, Keith was a member of the Smyrna Police Department. Actually, he was a sergeant when I was hired here in 1980, 1995. I'm trying to add years to myself. And was one of the first supervisors I ever worked for, and was always very loyal to the city, a very fair supervisor, excellent leadership qualities, and I am pleased to be bringing him back. So Keith Zagantz was a deputy chief of police and second-in-command at the city of Sandy Springs Police Department. He served with the Sandy Springs Police Department since the department's inception in 2006, and was one of the founding members of this highly-regarded Public Safety Department. He was part of a team that established the city's core values in community policing. This effort included enforcing the city's new ordinances and putting more patrol officers on the streets, creating a more visible and accessible police force for the citizens. His 28-year career in law enforcement began in 1991 with the city of Smyrna Police Department. His assignments here included uniform patrol, community policing, media relations, investigations, training and communications in the E911 Center. Deputy Chief Zagantz is a graduate of the University of Georgia and the FBI National Academy, where he currently sits on the Academy's Georgia Chapter Executive Board as the president. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you, and welcome back, Chief.
All right, first, we'll do the, the formal motion here. We have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Come on up, Chief. Come on up, and we'll do the swearing in. Judge Collins?
Okay. Families, welcome to come up and stand here as well. Do you want to come and stand? Chief, this is going to be for you. If you'll step over here, I'm going to have you stand right here and hold the Bible for him. You'll need to have this. This will be something that you can just kind of glance at, it'll go line by line.
All right.
Can you get a good shot, or you want him to come a little forward? Okay, all right. All right.
Glad I wore my glasses.
All right, you ready?
I am.
All right. I, Keith Zagantz.
I, Keith Zagantz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Smyrna Chief of Police.
Of the office of Smyrna Chief of Police.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further do solemnly swear.
I further do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear truth, faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the city of Smyrna.
To the city of Smyrna.
That I will serve it faithfully.
That I will serve it faithfully.
Against all enemies whatsoever.
Against all enemies whatsoever.
I swear that I am not the holder.
I swear that I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am.
Which I am.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
Prohibited from holding.
Prohibited from holding.
I swear that I am otherwise qualified.
I swear that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
And in all my actions as Chief of Police.
And in all my actions as Chief of Police.
Will act as I believe.
Will act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
And this is the box that goes with it.
You're the holder of the mics.
The holder of the mics.
Is that in your job description?
It is now. Judge says it is so. So the mayor asks if I want to say a few words, and I never pass up a free mic. First, I want to thank the city administration, city administrator, assistant city administrator, the staff, and of course, the mayor and council for giving me this opportunity. It truly is an honor, and, and I'm humbled to be here and look forward to doing great things with, with the city and with the police department. Have to thank my family. My wife, my children are here, my parents are here. We couldn't do this job in law enforcement without the support of our, our families, and I'm grateful for the support that they've given me for nearly 30 years, and really, really greatly appreciate that. And then I want to thank the support from all the folks back there. There's, there are some great people here in this police department, and I'm looking forward to being back here and being part of a great team. Thank you. All right. Item C now is presentation to Judge Joel Pugh in recognition of his service as environmental court judge for the city of Smyrna. Judge Pugh served us for eight years, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heather for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. We wanted to honor Judge Pugh in his service to the city as our environmental court judge. He has faithfully served this city for the last eight years. His staff is here also to send their congratulations to him and their appreciation for his years of service, and I'd like to invite him up now with his wife, if they could come up and just say a few words for this.
Well, I wasn't expecting to speak, but I do want to thank the city council and the mayor. It's been a, a great run. I've enjoyed serving the city. I hope we have made a difference and look forward to the city, great, a great future and great leadership of the city. Thank y'all very much. And I've known Keith Zagantz for 25 years, and a finer police chief you could not have selected.
Judge Pugh, it's with our appreciation. We'd like to give you a glass jonquel. I have a box for it, so it doesn't get.
Thank you, thank you.
And we really appreciate your service to the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item D, recognition of Bella Galloway, Campbell High School fast pitch softball. And I won't, I'm going to turn it over to Tim Gould in a minute, and I won't steal all his thunder, but suffice to say that Bella is the best player to ever play at Campbell High School softball. She had records in seven different categories amongst many other honors that Tim will go over, but we're very happy to have you here, to recognize you tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, this is a lot of, a lot of fun for me to have a chance to recognize Bella's hard work. I've had a chance to watch her play for the past five years with my daughter Abby, who's a junior, and Bella, of course, is a senior this year, so it's, uh, it's really, it's a pleasure to have you here today. So Bella, would you mind coming up maybe with your parents and Coach Kimball? And Dr. Walker, please? And Haley, Dicky, why don't you come on up too, since you're the.
I like that Kennesaw State sweatshirt.
Thank you.
So this is obviously part of Bella's support staff, her parents, Farrah and Erin. Dr. Walker, of course, from Campbell High School, Coach Kimball, and Haley Dicky, who's one of our local really great hitting instructors and, and just a really good, great help for a lot of, a lot of young players. So Bella, so for folks to know, Bella is graduating this year, she's having her number retired. She'll be the first Division One softball player to go on from Campbell. She'll play at Kennesaw State this coming year. So just a few, few highlights from, from her career. All-state catcher and first-team all-region, co-player in year 2000, team MVP from 2017, 18, 19, and 20. All-region honorable mention, 2017. All-region third baseman, 2018 and 2019. Marietta Daily Journal All-County honorable mention, 2018, 2019. Bella will have her number 24 retired at Campbell High School, which does not happen often. And other records that she's held, and again, a lot of fun watching Bella play over the years. Games played, 115. Batting average, 521. Hits, 159. Runs scored, 129. Doubles, 36. Home runs, 10, and RBI's 87. So Bella, I just got to tell you, it's been a pleasure watching you play. Your leadership, your drive, your competitiveness really has raised the bar for Campbell softball. It's, you've helped, helped to grow a lot of folks. Coach Kimball's done a great job, but your hard work has really set a good example for many of the younger players, so thank you very much. Really appreciate it. So with that, you get a mayor's award. Let me come on down there and present this to you. Medal of the city seal from the mayor, and then just the recognition for, for all you've done for Campbell High School, for the city. Really appreciate it. Congratulations. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, guys. Three some big things, right? Thanks, guys. Do you have anything to say?
No.
You get the picture, Bella?
I guess. Because you don't see the truth.
Our next item is item E, proclamation and recognition of Parkinson's Awareness Month, and I know we have with us Victoria Helmy, who's a Smyrna resident and board member of the Parkinson's Foundation Georgia Chapter, and Annie Long, Associate Director of Community Programs for the Parkinson's Foundation. This, this is something that hits home with me. My grandfather had Parkinson's. I'm glad that they are here to raise awareness, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Glenn Pickens for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just read the proclamation. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Parkinson's Awareness Month. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second-most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. And whereas Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will rise to 1.2 million by 2030. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the 14th-leading cause of death in the United States, according to the CDC. Whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $52 billion annually, including direct and indirect costs, including treatment and social security payments and lost income to patients and family members. Whereas research suggests that Parkinson's, that the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. And whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease varies from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement, and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. Whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services, such as those provided by the Parkinson's Foundation and other organizations, are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore, I, Mayor Norton, mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 2021 to be Parkinson's Awareness Month in Smyrna, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand upon, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this 19th day of April in the year of our Lord 2021.
I'd like to invite Victoria and Annie to come up. Just Annie. You want to take that down to him, Glenn? Want to say a few words?
Um, well, on behalf of the Parkinson's Foundation and the 1 million Americans, including my mom, living with Parkinson's disease, this is an honor, so thank you. Parkinson's Awareness Month is not just about, you know, raising funds to support research and ultimately to find a cure, but it's to really raise awareness about the devastating symptoms that this disease can have on patients and families, so thank you so much. Mayor Norton to the city of Smyrna for this honor. Thank you.
We appreciate you reaching out to us on this. Thank you so much. Our next item is item F. We have another superstar amongst us. This is a proclamation and recognition of Ms. Lisa Rogers, recipient of the Gifted Program Teacher of the Year 2020. Now, she's lived in Smyrna for 22 years and has been teaching 19 of them, and got the Gifted Program Teacher of the Year, the whole state, right? Pretty awesome stuff, and she's right here at Smyrna Elementary. So I want to turn it over to Travis Lindley for the proclamation and recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administrator Bennett and I had the, the high privilege of being present at the school when her colleagues and the administration pulled off a great caper, and on a couple of fronts. One, they, they surprised her, but what sort of left me in awe is they had roughly what seemed like 3,000 children sitting quietly waiting as part of the, part of the, the caper. So it was great, great to be there that day, and I'm also proud to have her as a resident in Ward 3. As the mayor noted, she's been part of our community here for 22 years, and I, I would say, by all rights, is one of our great pillars in our community, so. To the, to the officious things that, that I want to brag on her about, Ms. Rogers, teacher at Smyrna Elementary, was named Gifted Program Teacher of the Year 2020 by the Georgia Association of Gifted Children. The Gifted Program Teacher of the Year Award is presented to the gifted education teacher who has demonstrated exceptional training, dedication, and a positive parent relations in his or her school, community, and for the state of Georgia. And as the mayor noted, she is the recipient for the entire state, so again, a very, very high honor. I know she's got some guests here that I think are, a number of them are covered in the proclamation. So the official proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Ms. Lisa Rogers, Gifted Program Teacher of the Year 2020. Whereas Ms. Lisa Rogers, target ALOP teacher at Smyrna Elementary School, a resident of Smyrna for 22 years, was named Gifted Program Teacher of the Year by the Georgia Association of Gifted Children. And whereas the Gifted Program Teacher of the Year Award is presented to a gifted education teacher who has demonstrated exceptional teaching, dedication, and positive parent relations in her school, community, and state. And whereas Ms. Lisa Rogers has been teaching in Cobb County for 19 years, she's been at Smyrna Elementary for the past four years, where she was named Teacher of the Year for 2020 and 2021, that school year. She has also served students at Milford Elementary, Campbell Middle, and King Springs Elementary. And whereas in June 2020, Ms. Rogers was nominated by the Department of Education and won the position as a board member for the Georgia Council for Social Studies, and will serve as the liaison between the board and the elementary schools. And whereas Ms. Rogers provides professional development at Smyrna Elementary using children's picture books to teach equity and inclusion in the classroom, and is a current member of the Georgia Association of Gifted Children Coalition for Access and Equity. And whereas in March 2020, Ms. Rogers received the Gift Fellowship Award. in March 2020, Ms. Rogers received the Gift Fellowship Award and will be working to write curriculum for Georgia Tech and will be shared with schools nationally. And in April of this year, the State Department of Education selected Mrs. Rogers to record TED Talk video for educators to view across the country. And whereas Principal of Smyrna Elementary, Ms. Sharon Arduino, says Ms. Rogers passionate about teaching and is dedicated professional.
awesome to get to recognize some of them tonight. And I'd just say Smyrna is truly a very special place we live. I'm gonna go on to Item Four now, which is Land Issued
Her support for education extends beyond the classroom as a conscientious learner and a continuous learner and advocate for education. She seeks out leadership roles
Zonings Annexations. The first item is gonna be tabled. I'll go ahead and read it, and
and involves herself in areas where she can impact the future of education. Now therefore,
then I'll need a motion. Zoning Request Z20-006, rezoning from NS and RM 10, conditional
I, Derek Norton, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, hereby proclaim this day in recognition
for the development of 10 single-family attached townhomes at a density of 9.3 units
of Mrs. Lisa Rogers.
Thank you.
per acre, 1.08 acres, landlot 6693302, Atlanta Row. This is Edge Line LLC. And this will Hold on. I want to give you a chance to come to your thing, the surprise thing, but be tabled to the May 3, 2021, Mayor and Council meeting. May I have a motion, please? I wanted, I don't know whether to ask for your autograph or to...
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Gould, seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. We're gonna vote again.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Back in City Hall and working out all the kinks. So we're glad to be here, but figuring it out again. Item B, Ordinance 2020-05, public hearing, approval of ordinance 2021-05 for the code amendment to the city's Code of Ordinances, Section 402 and 505, Home Occupation, City of Smyrna. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated, the Community Development Department reviewed Sections 402 and 505 of the city's zoning ordinance to bring the home occupation requirements in line with the current standards. In recent years, the radius letter requiring the neighbor signatures has become unnecessary and cumbersome to the citizens looking to obtain a home occupation certificate. The proposed amendments include amend Section 102, I'm sorry, 402-30 to remove sentences that allow emergency consultation or treatment by physicians, dentists, lawyers, in the operation of one-chair salons, removing subsection 505.12, removing references to appearing in front of mayor and council, updating language to reflect current standards, and updating the order and the language of the home occupation conditions. Planning and zoning board approved on April 12, 2021 with a vote of 7-0. Community Development recommends approval of the following code amendments to Section 402 and 505 of the city's zoning ordinance.
With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has done a bunch of work led by Rusty Martin to clean up the ordinance. It's something that's more important these days. As more folks work from home, more home-based businesses, cities are just trying to make it as easy as possible for residents to register their business with the city and then just update the ordinance accordingly. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Item 4B as previously read.
Any discussion? Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Thank you. Scott, did I miss a, did I miss a public hearing there? I think I may have. Is there anybody that wanted to speak for or against that item? There wasn't anybody here anyway for that. So close that public hearing. Move on to Item C. This is a public hearing, approval of code amendments to the city code of ordinances to move variance requests from the License and Variance Board to the mayor and city council beginning May 3, 2021. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, for the proposed code amendments, we'll move all variance requests and appeals of administrative decisions from the city's code of ordinances from the License and Variance Board and to the mayor and council for final action. These variance requests include variances from the Alcohol Beverage Ordinance, Property Maintenance Code, Stream Buffer Ordinance, Zoning Ordinance, Subdivision Regulations, and Urban Design District. In addition, the proposed code amendments will rename the License and Variance Board to the License Board, which will just process license and requests. Should the proposed code amendment be approved by the city council, the variance request will begin to be heard by the city council at the May 3, 2021 council meeting. The proposed text amendments have been sent to the city attorney for review and comment. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed code changes related to the variance process.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak for or against this? I'd invite you to be sworn in by our city attorney now. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city continues to grow, I think we've seen instances where residents and property owners have asked for variances and often require input and result in input from surrounding neighbors and citizens. And I think moving to, moving the variance decisions to mayor and council allows us to play a role in those decisions and listen to the residents and take their feedback into account. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Item 4C as previously read.
Motion, any discussion? All right. Motion by Mr. Gould, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item D, 2021-150, request for a name change for apartment complex loaded at, located at 1,000 Belmont Park Drive to Midwood Belmont LLC, doing business as Midwood Belmont Apartments. Mr. Bennett, any background?
Yes, sir. Due to an ownership change of the apartment complex, a name change has been requested. The requested name change would be from Southern Realty Management, Inc., DBA Belmont Park Apartments to Midwood Belmont LLC, DBA Midwood Belmont Apartments. Joseph Kagan is the applicant manager. The name change has been approved by the Fire Marshal, Building Inspector, City Engineer, 911 Communications, Water Department, City Marshal, and Business License Officer. Request for name change for apartment complex located at 1,000 Belmont Park Drive to Midwood Belmont LLC, DBA Midwood Belmont Apartments.
This is in Ward Three. I'll turn it over to Councilman Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was there anybody here this evening from the development? All right, hearing none. With that, motion due pass as previously read and reported.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you. Item Five is Privilege Licenses. We have one tonight. Item A, License 2021-04, privilege license request, License 2021-04, beer, wine, and liquor, retail pouring at 652 Concord Road Southeast, Little College LLC, doing business as Little College with Drew Erig as agent. Mr. Bennett, any background, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Erig will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at the reference location. Mr. Erig has been given a copy of the Alcohol Beverage Ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal information that would preclude the issuance of this license. Drew Erig has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol.
Before I turn it over to Mr. Lindley, that looks great, what you've done over there. And I hope, I hope that business is picking up, and I've seen some, some things going on over there, but the property looks fantastic. You've done a great job over there.
It means a lot to me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
This is in Ward Three. Mr. Lindley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening again. I know you've been with us before. Appreciate, appreciate you continuing to sort of move through the process. Would you like to say anything about the business? Well, I'm just honored to own property in the City of Smyrna and look forward to a wonderful future of enhancing the city and, you know, hopefully doing a lot of weddings in the City of Smyrna.
Is that primarily weddings? Is it for other functions too, or primarily?
Definitely available for, you know, lots of different types of functions. Weddings are our primary market that we're, that we're searching, looking for. I currently own a catering business in the City of Atlanta for the last 17 years, so it's a natural progression of owning my own catering business as well.
Good deal. We appreciate you doing business in Smyrna.
Can I ask, what's the capacity?
Legal capacity is about 352. But, you know, when we speak to our clients, you know, we feel that about 150, 170 is the comfortable number, especially for a wedding where, you know, the client would want to actually do the ceremony in half the space and then the reception in the other half. With that, motion due pass as previously presented.
Have a motion, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Congratulations. Thank you for doing business in Smyrna.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Rusty, as well. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck to you. Item Six is Formal Business, 6A 2021-124, Approval of the Secrets of Smyrna Historical Street Theater Tour hosted by Smyrna Arts Council showcasing some of Smyrna citizens of yesteryear and most interesting places. The tour is scripted and performed by Atlanta Theater to Go and is proposed to take place on Saturday, October 16, and Sunday, October 17, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. The tour will consist of three 45-minute walking tours of various downtown locations and one street closure, memorial place between Church Street and Atlanta Road adjacent to the Smyrna Cemetery. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Staff recommends approval of this first-time street theater event taking place over two evenings and highlighting Smyrna history and culture with street closings and event specifics as requested.
This is in Ward Three. Turn it over to Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had the privilege, I think they were working towards this prior to the pandemic, and it sounded like a great program. I know a lot of work's gone into it. So look forward to hopefully getting to be a part of it this year as we return to normal. With that, motion due pass as previously read.
Any discussion? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Congratulations. Thank you for doing business in Smyrna.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Rusty, as well. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck to you. Item Six is Formal Business, 6A 2021-124, Approval of the Secrets of Smyrna Historical Street Theater Tour hosted by Smyrna Arts Council showcasing some of Smyrna citizens of yesteryear and most interesting places. The tour is scripted and performed by Atlanta Theater to Go and is proposed to take place on Saturday, October 16, and Sunday, October 17, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. The tour will consist of three 45-minute walking tours of various downtown locations and one street closure, memorial place between Church Street and Atlanta Road adjacent to the Smyrna Cemetery. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Staff recommends approval of this first-time street theater event taking place over two evenings and highlighting Smyrna history and culture with street closings and event specifics as requested.
This is in Ward Three. Turn it over to Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had the privilege, I think they were working towards this prior to the pandemic, and it sounded like a great program. I know a lot of work's gone into it. So look forward to hopefully getting to be a part of it this year as we return to normal. With that, motion due pass as previously read.
Any discussion? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item B, 2021-158, Approval of a Road Closure for a Buffer Lane on Atlanta Road on April 22, 2021, from 7:00 p.m. until approximately 9:00 p.m. for a Campbell High Glow Walk and authorize the Office of the Assistant City Administrator to approve all necessary documents. Mr. Bennett, the background.
Yes, sir. This event will begin on April 22 at 7:00 p.m. in the back parking lot of the high school. There will be approximately 100 students that will walk in groups, for COVID purposes, walking down Fleming Street to Atlanta Road, utilizing the sidewalks. The students will walk south to Bronner Hall. After a rest, they will return northbound on the sidewalks back to Campbell High School. An application for a special event has been completed and a virtual meeting completed to answer additional questions the police department and fire department had regarding this event. Staff recommends approval.
And I don't know if y'all are planning on going, but I'm gonna go to that and walk with them and invite any of y'all to join us. This is in Ward Six. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understand it, the event was organized by Campbell High School seniors and reached out and went about things in the right way to ask for some help, which I appreciate staff's help in making this happen. So look forward to the event, recognizing the hard work of seniors before they move on to the next phase of their exciting lives. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Item 6B as previously read.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. Mr. Gould has now voted, and it's approved 7-0. Item C, 2021-162, Approval to amend the budget for items not included in the fiscal 2021, fiscal year 2021 budget adoption. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. During fiscal year 2021, several expenditures have occurred that were not included in the adopted budget. These items have been discussed with council at previous meetings for approval. For financial reporting purposes, needs to be an amendment to the budget to cover these expenditures. We'll be using general fund reserves or the fund balance for this purpose.
And with that, I'll turn it over to our Budget Chair, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion to approve Item 2021-162.
Any discussion? All right. Have a motion, seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-1 with Councilwoman Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item D is 2021-163, Approval of Amendment Number One to the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Subrecipient Agreement Number CD21-C21SA and CD21-C21S8 for the reduction in the city's grant award in the total amount of $29,840.93. This reduces the city's total amount to be received for the 2021 CDBG allocation to $278,640.07, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Over the past several years, CDBG funds invested in the city have paid for numerous public improvements, and the City of Smyrna continues being a subrecipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program. Effective April 14, 2021, the subrecipient agreement is amended to reflect the changes as noted. All other language requirements and provisions of the original subrecipient agreement shall remain unchanged and in full force. From the original estimate, the amount is broken down as follows. Administration and planning was reduced by $5,968.19, and public facilities reduced by $23,872.74. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement Number CD21-C21SA and CD21-C21S8 for the reduction in the city's grant award in the total amount of $29,840.93. This reduces the city's total amount to be received for the 2021 CDBG allocation to $278,640.07, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
So basically, they, their estimate was wrong. They're gonna give us less money, and we gotta vote to say that we're gonna get less money. Okay. All right. Well, then I'll turn it over to our Budget Chair, Mr. Corky Welch. Seems like we have to vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Despite my reluctance, I vote to motion to approve Item 6D, 2021-163.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Welch has made a motion to accept less money. Do I have a second? Dr. Wheaton is seconded. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Glad we got that out of the way. Let's see. Item Seven is Commercial Building Permits, 2021-113 is Item A, Issuance of a Commercial Building Permit for Construction of a New Kitty Academy, 3383 South Cobb Drive, Anchore Construction, Inc. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The construction of a new 11,400 square foot building is for the Kitty Academy. The total estimated cost of the project is $3 million. And Anchore Construction Incorporated is listed as a general contractor for the project.
This is the old SunTrust Bank on South Cobb Drive. They're gonna be demolishing that and building this. This is in... This is in Ward Three. You've had a busy night, Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a funny story about that bank. In roughly about 1983, I believe, I locked my father in the vault, so he'll be happy to hear that it'll be demolished.
And you were, and you were 20.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, motion to approve as previously read.
Any discussion? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item eight is a consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, MIN 2021-23, approval of the March 11, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, MIN 2021-20, approval of the March 15, 2021 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, MIN 2021-21, approval of the March 15, 2021 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item D, MIN 2021-26, approval of the April 1, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. And item E, 2021-166, approval of the Smyrna Traffic Calming Committee's findings, next steps for wards three and six, as noted on the attachment list and approved under the budget amendment, approved on April 19, 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Seconded by Mr. Gould, seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. We're going to move on to ward and committee reports, and we'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens, who has an announcement for everybody. Oh, I didn't know if he wanted to make that announcement. I bet he does now.
No announcement this evening. No report. Thank you, though.
No announcement or report, okay. We'll hold that announcement for later. Mr. Wagner?
Just, again, reiterate the opportunity that the city's providing to get vaccines for everyone. Just encourage everyone to come out Rose Garden tomorrow from 2 to 4, and then every Friday, go online and make an appointment. Just want to encourage everyone to do that.
And stay tuned also for where else we're taking vaccines out into the city. Mr. Lindley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank the staff for helping make us safe to be back in City Hall. It's been good to be back. At the beginning of our term, I think we were in here five meetings, and the rest is sort of a blur in the big gym. I wanted to congratulate the newly-named chief, Zagontz. Look forward to working with him. Also want to thank interim chief, Robert Harvey, for all of his work over the last couple of months. And huge thanks to Public Works. Everywhere I go in Ward Three, they're doing some great work in getting the city looking good, so that's it.
Mr. Welch?
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes, I just wanted, wait a second. I wanted to say how excited I am about being back in here after over a year. It's really nice, and thank the staff for all the work they've done to make it safe for us. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, one announcement, that Campbell High School is having a cleanup day led by the junior ROTC, and it'll be this Saturday from about 8 to noon. Bring, come on out. We'll be moving pine straw and cleaning up and bring gloves and be ready to pitch in for a few minutes if you have any time. Anybody's presence would be greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Dr. Wheaton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really great to be in here tonight, echo everyone else's sentiments for sure, and also really good to really celebrate the community tonight a little bit, too, you know, having recognition of sports and academics and new staff in the city to help serve the residents. Really, really great night. Just want to give a shout out to Nickajack Elementary School and the families down there who raised some really great funds for a new field, new athletic field for the kids down there that they're able to take advantage of through the PTA. Really tremendous field for them, really nice refurbishment and really good partnership with the community in doing that and getting that done. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Dr. Wheaton. And I just had one other thing I wanted to mention. Tomorrow is the year, a year ago tomorrow is when we lost Officer Christopher Ewing, who was killed by a drunk driver here in Smyrna. I just ask you all to please keep his family and the fellow officers in your thoughts and prayers tomorrow. With that, we'll go to item 10, show cause hearings. We have none. I don't think anybody signed up for citizen input. Is there anybody out in the audience who would like to say anything tonight? Okay. With that, if there's no other business to be brought before this body, I declare us adjourned at 7:54.